I'm gonna call the meeting together here. It's seven o'clock, Wednesday, October 26th. This is the Town of Brookfield Planning Board. We're having a special meeting to look at warrant articles. We'll do a roll call. I'm Tim Straz, Terry Ward.
Here.
Ed Camo.
Here.
John Mayer.
Here.
Rick Surratt. We're all here, no alternates. We're gonna discuss the first item, or the only item on the agenda, is discuss proposed warrant articles. We'll start with revise RA-1, Section 3C, building lot requirements, 250-foot continuous frontage. The, I'll read the amendment as it was written for us by the town lawyer. It reads, "Are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number One as proposed by the planning board for the town zoning ordinance as follows?" And then Article 2A, 3C. "To clarify that lots in the RA-1 district must have 250 feet of contiguous frontage on a Class V or private road in order to be a building lot, and that lots fronting on Kingswood Lake must have 250 feet of contiguous frontage on the lake in order to be a building lot." Is there a motion to move forward on this amendment?
Some moved.
Is there a second? My second opinion, yeah. Is there a discussion?
Well, this is just adding the contiguous feet for the recs on.
For RA-1?
In clarifying.
No, this is our residential zone.
All right, okay. And the lake.
And the lake, yes. So you have to have two, not one.
So the big change is splitting it into.
Contiguous. Contiguous, yes.
Yes, comment, comment?
Yes.
We, as we all thought, we voted on this in 2015, and it was put into our zoning incorrectly. I would suggest, because people look for our zoning today, I would suggest we change our zoning immediately. Put that and.
Yep.
And move forward with this on the, on the, on the warrant. But you can make the correction to the zoning, you can reverse the 2015 warrant. I don't, I don't know how many other ones like that we have.
Well, let me, let me find the email here. Bear with me just a moment so that the rest of the, the board understands what you're referring to. Stand by. I gotta find it. It's number four, if I remember.
Yes, it was.
So on the town official warrant ballot, the Town of Brookfield, March 10th, 2015, Amendment Number Four read, "Are you in favor of Amendment Number Four to the Brookfield zoning ordinance as proposed by the planning board as follows? Amend the building lot requirements and definitions to remove the requirement for an increased lot size in circumstances, to require frontage on a Class V or approved private road, and to require lots fronting on Kingswood Lake to have 250 feet of shore frontage," which was approved 79 to Note 28. So the key part is the and, is the differentiating part of the zoning that is currently written. Find a copy of it. So all lots shall have not less than 250 feet of frontage on a Class V or approved private road, and the lot depth shall not be less than 200 feet. Lots fronting on Kingswood Lake shall have not less than 250 feet of frontage on said lake. Lots with less frontage in depth, which is recorded tax as a lot of record at the time of passage of this ordinance, on March 14th, 1961, shall be deemed a non-performing lot subject to the conditions indicated under Article Four. So our current zoning, as it's posted, does not have 250 feet of road frontage and 250 feet of lake frontage. So right now, our zoning as posted is not accurate to its 2015 vote. So we can correct that as reference. This is accurate, and then we will, we still have the contiguous part here, which is what the warrant article is for. So we have one action item outside of this amendment discussion. So it looks like everybody's kind of, we're done discussing, so let's, we want to have a vote as to move forward. All those in favor say aye.
No, is it, is, I have a question. Does this mean that.
Right.
Well, yeah, well, you know.
It's got to happen never, but yep.
That we all, that the planning board unanimously approves of this change?
Yes.
So that's what we're doing here?
Well, we're voting to move forward, put this on to the ballot.
Recommend it to the planning board?
Yes.
I guess that's my question.
That's the only way it's gonna come there, unless it's a citizen warrant article.
So it's no discussion in the audience?
You, you all have a public hearing?
Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Aye, so. Okay, so all those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed. All right, so Amendment One moves forward. Next item on the list is revise RA-1, Section 3G, building lot requirements, building on Class VI roads. It's on the other side of a piece of paper there. So as it's presented from the lawyer, from our draft that was sent to her, she writes, "Are you in favor of the adoption of Amendment Number Two as proposed by the planning board for the town zoning ordinance as follows?" And then Article 2A, 3G, "To allow lots with at least 250 feet of frontage on a Class VI road to be developed under certain cert, conditions, including that the driveway to property must be within 500 feet of the nearest intersection with a Class V road." And then we have a list of contingencies here. Conditions. Lots with 250 feet of continuous, contiguous frontage on Class VI road, which has not been discontinued provided the following conditions are met. One, driveways must be no more than 500 feet from the nearest intersection to a Class V road. Two, two-lot maximum subdivision. Three, one family owner, uh, family owner per lot, and there's a note here that the lawyer is uncertain what we're trying to accomplish with this condition, so there may be some discussion. Number four, approval of the fire department determining if access to the Class VI road is passable for fire trucks. Five, must meet all current building permanent standard qualifications. Six, road will not be upgraded to a Class V road. Seven, road will be maintained by the landowner. And eight, town will not maintain any part of the road while it is a Class VI road. Is there a motion to move forward with this?
There may be some discussion on this, so somebody should move.
I just have a quick question. So essentially, number two is saying, no matter the size of the acreage of the lot, you can only have two lots?
We're not gonna discuss that right now. I'll make a motion in order to have a discussion on the subject.
Make a motion out of discussion?
You want to? Your motion is to move forward on this? Yes, I'm sorry. So we need to, somebody to.
You just need to motion, may I ask you? You just need to motion first, and then somebody seconds it, and then we can discuss it. You should, that's the procedure. So somebody should move to accept this, and then we'll settle.
Or move to move, move, move forward on this discussion.
So moving forward on it is a.
We can't discuss it yet. Do you, are you, is somebody gonna say they wanna move forward on this item? If somebody moves forward on it, we can then second it, and then we have a discussion.
I move to move forward with it.
Okay, I'll second it. All right, let's have discussion. Eric.
If we put this one article forward, is, again, like I had a question on the last one, it's basically saying the planning board approves of this one article and recommends it?
Yes.
Okay, well, all right.
Okay?
Yeah, another discussion. Apparently, the attorney had a problem three, and says, "No, I cannot understand what you're trying to accomplish with this condition."
Yes.
Now, I, it was strange, because I'm reading it, and I thought I was reading what was in my head. I don't understand it either. One family owner per lot? How are you gonna enforce that? That's the only problem. I don't have a problem with the language, but I do have a problem with the language. How do you enforce that?
I think we would strike that based on the lawyer's recommendation.
Okay.
That would be my discussion point there, is that, I feel, three would be striking from the, from the warrant article.
Okay. Well, she didn't say that, she just said she doesn't understand.
Right, well, she doesn't understand, we have to find it out. Either we can find it more, or we remove it, right? Go for it.
Where was the chair of the individual lit不起 attorney, or is this via email?
This was the selectman's, right? It was his email.
What, when she said she didn't understand what you were trying to accomplish, what were her issues with that?
You're reading it verbatim.
Yes.
Oh, she just didn't understand it?
Yes. So it certainly be struck. She just doesn't see any relevance to it. That's how I took it.
John?
So I guess my question was, based on number two, what it's saying is regardless of the size of the lot, you can only have two, you can only subdivide it into two lots?
Yep.
Okay. So like, if someone had purchased, like, the 75-acre lot or 100-acre lot, they wouldn't be able to put, like, a 40-house subdivision if they fit the constraints of lots?
Eric?
I, I still have, I still have trouble with this because although up on Woodman Hill Road, I don't, I don't foresee any problem with what would be proposed to be done up there. But there's a lot of roads on town, and it's, and it's just, we're opening ourselves up to potential problems. And I guess I don't know how to say it, but there's, there's certain things in here that I'd wanna put in here to turn it up rather than have the way it's written here verbatim.
What are your proposals?
Start with number one. I'd wanna make 500 feet, less than 500 feet. And that brings me to number two, no subdivisions. And third, no creation of new lots on Class VI roads to be developed in the 300 feet. So lots that are already there are okay. But no creation of more lots. The second thing is on the, I mean, the third thing on the, if I had a ballot determining access is, I have an issue with the, the liability where it could go further on this where developments on other Class VI roads. At what point do, just by, you just sign a waiver, like buying a vehicle as is, to forfeit fire and rescue? That, that doesn't sound like that would fly. I'd swear that we'd still be liable. That could be another question for the lawyer.
So I wanna better understand it, number one, or actually the, the. So you're saying, including that the driveway to the property must be within 500 feet of the nearest intersection of Class V road, are you proposing that distance be changed?
Yes.
Do you have a distance in mind?
Less than 500. Or that could study the.
I mean, within is less than, right?
Yes. The, no creation of new lots. So 500 potentially allows two, 250-foot frontage.
Right.
So it can be addressed either way. Cut down the 500, or have no creation of new lots. Hey, did you have something like that?
Was this the selectman rep finished?
Those were three. I'm for it.
How, can somebody refresh my memory? How many roads would fit? How many building areas did this 500 feet from the intersection actually count, right? Wasn't it a very small one?
It was like, I think it was eight.
It was eight.
Eight that were, if you excluded the 100, 150-acre lots, it would be down to eight. Yeah, eight lots under 10 acres. Twelve lots in total.
Well, me personally, I haven't seen any problem with the 500 feet. Private property, I don't see a problem with it. Number two, the two-lot maximum division, don't have any problem with that, in my personal opinion. I believe number three should be taken out in agreement with the attorney. And I do agree with the selectman's rep about the approval of the fire department. I don't know if, well, I haven't heard from the fire department. I don't know if they are aware or do this type of waiver now in the area. And what is available to protect the town, that part I agree with. If somebody signs a waiver, is it legally binding where we, the town will not ever be sued if equipment can't get down there or something happens? I, I never saw this waiver before, and I don't know how enforceable it is, so I kinda worry about that. And I don't, I don't disagree with any of the other parts, so it's, I have no problem with the 500 feet. No problem with the two-lot ma, maximum subdivision, get rid of three. And then before issue, that's the only problem I have.
Good.
Mrs. Agar, have a question, you should.
No, good. Chris, do you have any comments?
The only thing I have is I did do a little more research on it. If, if anyone's interested in what, the, the way it reads for a lot of other towns, actually, a lot of the stuff is on there, and there's, in the several towns I printed out here, there's even more clarification. Almost all of them include approval by the fire chief or road agent or both for the road. But there's a lot of specific stuff in, in these too about, you know, drainage, size of the rocks in the road, the gravel bed of the road, there's, you know, a lot of stuff. I even found a town that's like Brookfield that doesn't allow building. Well, they don't allow human inhabitation, but they allow for a building. So, you know, maintenance shed barn kind of thing. So I don't know if that's of any interest to anybody, if they'll look at it. You do?
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm.
Back to the approval of turn of the four, the fire department. Is the planning board gonna have to develop documentation, which would be a separate app, separate application that the person would apply for? Obviously, we're gonna have to do that.
Yeah.
So is, do we have any type of a copy or a proof of what that waiver looks like that we're gonna have to incorporate into ours?
Should have a copy of it right there. Yep. We, we have that from our previous.
If I can continue, if this, if this license rep also agrees that there might be an issue with that liability, has our attorney looked at the specific documents we're gonna use for the town? And what she says also is enforceable?
We have not.
Let me just do, well, that here, I don't think that would be something we should do.
Here's the Town of Ospey agreement released regarding building permit for a Class VI driveway. I'm sure it's there.
The one, the Town of Brookfield one is there too.
Yeah.
From the, I think, the very first meeting that we had.
So if this goes through. Can you put up more than one family unit on a single lot?
No, can't anywhere in town right now.
Okay, well, that one.
You have to, you have to follow the same.
So it would have to be subdivided.
Right. If we're saying no to, right?
No, I'm not saying no to that.
Do you want to keep a two-lot subdivision as an option within this?
Well, depending, maybe there should be a minimum original lot size in it. You know, a minimum 10 acres for this to even happen. So if they do subdivide, then it would be two 5-acre lots, possibly, or a two-and-a- acre or something. But if it's only a 5-acre lot, do you want them cut in that in half and have them two, two-and-a-half acre lots, which would still be building code, right?
As long as you have 250 feet of roof frontage.
Or on a private road. Oh, okay. So that's why the 500 feet, you go less than that. Then you eliminate the possibility of someone.
See.
Right.
And mind you, may I ask you?
Yes, absolutely.
Considering we had permission, I figured I'd start doing that now.
Okay.
That way, if somebody wanted to build a separate house on that other, that other park, it still has to, the setbacks have to be there, the set deck has to still sit on it, and all those other requirements are still there to, to protect anything that's gonna happen. That would be a problem, so. Just to answer what you.
Okay. So you are discussion on this?
Yes, I just, I, I do believe that the, the lawyer should make sure. I know they're already using this, but if it's for our purposes, we should just make sure we do it with diligence and make sure this is, this waiver is enforceable for us. Kind of, subject to the law.
Does that mean it's gonna be inspected once a year to make sure fire trucks are good, isn't it? I mean, it just puts more work on the fire department, doesn't it, to, to chief to go and check these rules or something?
Well, there's a fee in this wa, there's a fee to this waiver. Do we know how much that fee is? I mean, I would think that that's part of fire departments' duty to do that.
One, one other point, with the, the plow laws we have around here, Class V is where they mean a Class VI is not only treated as the end of the line, and they push in those snowberms. Not all. Case hards, everything. Well, plow people have to make the combinations for the end of the Class VI roads that would continue business as usual. Is that, that be tough to push out?
There, there's already a combination being made on the Tumble Down Dick Road, because they continue to plow that beyond where it's plowed. So, I mean, it's already happening.
So they don't, they don't leave a pile at the end of that?
No. You gotta, you gotta plow up and into the last driveway so you don't block the road.
So it would be, have to be a provision for snow removal at the end of the Class V?
Well, that would be, that would be the responsibility of the landlord, may sure as heck clear.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, you can't, you push a whole street down, like a dead end, and leave it there, that's.
And then freeze and rain, and, yeah, I understand all that, but.
Then, then there's a fire. It's just, who's, what is the business responsibility to allow?
Well, I think if, where it was plowing, probably Eddie Nathan or one of his kids are likely to be the dude who plowed, most likely.
Yeah, I mean.
I mean, if they know somebody living up in there, I don't think they're gonna bury them.
Well, some people we know up on, where, where we're discussing up on Woodman Hill, for example, I'm sure they, they got the equipment to handle that. But I suppose somebody comes in from wherever and buys a lot in the Class VI road like that, builds on it, and they don't understand this, and it's just, it, it, it's just, it should, it should be addressed. Just, the, the planning boards made decisions in the past that have come back and bothered us. I just, just wanted to be, be clear on what we're doing here.
What does it say? The town will not maintain any part of the road while it is Class VI?
But he's talking about the end of a Class V and a Class VI. So I'm kind of wondering, under number four, the fire department determining access to the Class VI roads passable for fire trucks? You know, is the road ag, can the road agent speak to that issue? Can it be the road agent that would determine the approval at the guidance of the fire department? And then the road agent would be responsible for the snow removal? So the road agent would be responsible for the pass, for determining the passage?
Well, it's just, it's, it almost, it almost comes down to me and neighborly or something. Everybody knows each other around here. It's, but we have to have a provision, we have to have a place to put snow, and then. So it's some, said something that should be added on.
Well, this is potentially eight or 12 different places we're talking about, not just the one on Woodman Hill Road, right? Did you say there were eight or 12 lots or?
Well, four of them are on Woodman Hill.
Well, right now, we know Woodman Hill wants to go, but there's about eight others in town. Some, some of them are in spots that aren't very accessible, or accessible from other towns. We know that people wanna build on Tumble Down Dick Road at the end of the Class V, the summer camps. I think you just specify whether Class V, the summer camp is in or out of this. Because it's a Class V, and then it goes to Class VI, and that's where people wanna build. So be clear.
Well, we know the Class V that ends at Camp Road, right?
To summer camps is the way it's defined today.
It's a different Class V, Class V just for the summer. There's no winter maintenance.
I'm just asking, be clear in your organs that it doesn't include that road if that's what you want. Yeah, Class V on Tumble Down Dick Road ends at Kenny Primos. Not the summer camps. Right, then it keeps going, then it's Class VI when they're on. No, it's Class V to summer camps. Oh, it is? We maintain that to Camp Road, to Leclerc's Road? It's never plowed in the winter though. To summer camps, to summer camps, which only use summer payments. Oh, I never knew that was Class VI, the Class V up there. To summer camps is a special classification. You can have a Class V to winter camps, you can have a Class V to summer camps. Town voted to make that Class V to summer camps. So we stop maintaining it when winter comes around.
Is there a sign up there right after Primos that says Class VI right there?
No, no, it says not maintained for winter travel.
It says not maintained for the travel.
There used to be a Class VI sign at the, hang.
There is a Camp Road.
Camp Road.
Yeah, it's gone now.
And so what?
There's just a signpost there.
It's another shop.
I don't know it, no.
Yes, about the snow on the end of the road. Doesn't the Town of Brookfield have a snow removal policy or some type of a, a guide for the road agent that, guide for the road agent and a guide for. agent and a guide for the plower, you can put snow here, you can put snow here, isn't there something like that? I don't, there is. You have a policy for town's snow removal. You could add the policy that the road agent has to not leave snow at the end.
Just pick up on Rick's concern about liability. You can see a scenario where, where there's a pile of snow that the road agent doesn't think is significant, that freezes, and a fire truck can't get in. You're going to court over it.
They signed a waiver, and it says, "The owner shall be responsible for maintaining access to the property." I'm just saying, if this is legally valid and enforceable, and somebody leaves a huge mound of snow, that's why I'm saying, if you just simply.
It's not, it's not even a huge, it's got to be a misunderstanding. I didn't think it was a huge mound. Someone else thinks it's a huge mound, you got confusion there. That's where you get sued.
Well, that, that same argument can be made for every one of our driveways, though, and certain snowstorm that.
I'm just saying, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
So that means the waiver doesn't mean anything if it's not enforceable. I'm just saying, go to the attorney, make sure, and I would answer that specific question. I would say, if that specific item happens, would we be covered? And then would she, uh, represent the town for free if it, uh? I understand, I understand that, that.
So let's think about signing off your rights to public service. You, fire, police, ambulance, whatever. It just, uh, it just doesn't seem to me like that's something you can do.
Now, you're paying property taxes, I mean, I bet that could be argued. I'm paying property taxes I deserve.
These are taxpayers.
I deserve, you know, services as well as anybody. Chris?
In my research of this, I found that the Supreme Court upheld the town's rights in every single case of these class six roads. They, they held up the liability, they held up, uh, the town's right to refuse people to build, for whatever reason they decided, even if there was a policy in place of the, if they didn't, if there was any little thing that wasn't met by the landowner, the Supreme Court, the state New Hampshire Supreme Court upheld the town's, uh, ability to keep it from happening. It's been, it's happened several times, um, locally here in New Durham, and, uh, basically, landowner rights kind of go out the window, uh, when, when it comes to this. For whatever reason, I, I wasn't able to find any case in my research that the, that the Supreme Court signed with the landowner.
Could your research cover the liability as well, the side of the waiver?
Well, that was, um, I, I couldn't find anything that specifically dealt with, you know, a fire or an injury or something like that, but, um, the landlord had to meet every, every one of these things, like, if you, if you look at some of those towns, I mean, the list is enormous, I mean, it's very specific where they're going to allow it. And if the landlord tried to fight it, the Supreme Court said, "No," you know, it's very specific in the, in the rules of the town, and you're out of luck. I mean, I don't know if that means anything or not, it's just, uh, and, and there's probably a better way to research it other than just, you know, sifting through the internet, looking for anything that, you know, you can find. I mean, you know, a lawyer could easily reference it, but, um, you know, just basic research, uh, the Supreme Court stood with the towns.
But that's what lawyers probably have access to, case law like that.
Yeah.
Sure they do.
That's how I won all my cases against the government. You, the, the attorney has access to every court case in order to make decisions on whatever she's trying to.
Skill to dig and throw it.
That's why I'm saying, if she reviewed it, definitely, and I think all those, all the concerns are valid. I just want to make sure that the town is, that town cannot be gone after.
Why, I'm just curious, why, why not take the other tact, which is that the landowner is responsible for all of that, and the police and the fire have to sign it to say, "Yes, we have access to it." Why, why put the town at risk to accommodate a landlord on something that hasn't been a while before, right? So you're creating a new opportunity.
We contract those services.
You know, why, why not have the landlord be the one responsible for that, instead of the town? And then you don't have to even put that in there, just the observation.
No, no backup to it, and it's another way to look at it, right?
As far, as far as I, as far as I know, the, the, the whole point of this, uh, warrant article would be to put all of the responsibility on the landlord, to, to take care of all of those things, if there's any fees that are incurred yearly, whatever maintenance is solely done by the landlord, the town would accept no responsibility for anything, including to the point of not allowing the road to be upgraded.
Yep.
Well, we can just expand number seventy to encompass a little bit more of the statement, saying the landlord is totally responsible for any issues that may arise.
I think the statement, road, road will be maintained by the landlord, pretty much.
And, and, and assure that it's passable by emergency equipment at all times.
The application kind of hand, may I?
Yeah.
The application basically handles that.
Yeah.
That's, that's what it says. Do you have the application?
It gives to you.
No, I meant the.
No, I don't, no.
That, that answers all those questions.
Oh.
And I.
And the town would have a copy of this, right? Not just a fire warrant, a fire marshal.
That would go, that would go to the, the, the owner, the property has to sign that, that affidavit has to be done correctly.
Has to be recorded at the registry deeds with the property.
Yes. Number four, the approval of the fire department to determine. Now, what would happen, I hear this what if thing all the time, is what happens if the fire department, how can we make sure that the fire department has done their due diligence, so, do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, that's why I'm worried for Rudy, who should be the, to fire. This person that determines.
What bothers me, may I?
Yeah.
What bothers me about that is the road agent is an employee of the town, and if he doesn't do something right, they might go back on the town, so I'm just saying. I'm not comfortable only completely with not knowing the fire department's determination. How do they determine it? Is that also enforceable? Meaning, if, we should know what that is before we agree to it, because we need to be able to say, if we have to go into court, we're going to have to see, we're going to have to show the court that we did our part by having them sign that waiver, and it's legally binding, and here is what the fire department did. Like, if they don't create any report at all?
Yep.
And what, are they going out? Are they saying, "Yeah, it's okay"? Are they signing something? What are they doing? I think we should know that before, before that. And also, the town may want to explain that, because some people can't answer that question.
It's on the ballot.
This is a.
Yeah, I always get that confused on that.
Goes on the ballot.
Okay.
So you have to explain it at the public hearing.
Okay, agreed. But do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, but the process is, you guys set the rules, and then the building inspector looks at the rules and enforces them with, with the help of the selectmen. So if the building inspector won't give you a building permit until the road's in the right condition, you, you, you're laying out the rules and the process, but they're not enforced by you, they're enforced by the building inspector.
What? Yeah, I know that I'm talking about the fire department, making sure that the fire department process is.
The building inspector will do that, as part of the building, building permit process.
I think that's saying what's it defined.
Hmm, yep.
No, I need clarification. If it says that you need approval of the fire department to determine the, the access to the class six road, what does the building inspector have to do with what the fire department is doing?
That'll be part of the permit process, to get a building permit on a class six road. That'll have to be part of the checklist.
And it doesn't negate what I said about, we need to understand what the fire department's actions is anyway.
Agreed, there'll need to be a process put forward for them to follow.
Okay.
Yep, I'm, I'm with you on that.
Okay. So I just want to be understood.
Yep. Yes, Rick?
Question, did, in, in anyone's research, does Wakefield as our fire department, do they allow building on class six roads? Is this something they'd be familiar with?
Yeah, they, they do. They allow it. I don't, I don't, I didn't, wasn't able to find anything to print off in terms of what their regulations are, but they're kind of loose.
So when I go to Wakefield Fire Department, it's been like a big surprise.
I don't know if they have that provision in there, in the rules, like I said, that what I know of Wakefield is, they're pretty loose, and it's basically, it's up to the planning board to decide whether they're going to allow it. They have, they have the discretion, well, much, like, you'd have the discretion, no matter what happens with this, you have the discretion and, uh, to decide.
Would they be held liable by extension of being the fire and police for the Town of Brookfield? Like, for instance, if something happened and Brookfield got sued by the, the homeowner or what have you, because they provide us the services, would they be able to get sued by extension of providing us those services?
I don't know, but say as long as shit hits the fan, everyone gets sued.
True.
So, item number three of the Wakefield building permit for class six roads says, "Owner shall be responsible for maintaining access to the property and does hereby forever release and just discharge the town, its officers, agents, employees, from the obligation of maintaining the road and from any claim of any nature, whether in tort or otherwise, which owner might have against the town for any loss or damage, including those incurred for failure to provide municipal services, including fire, police, fire, and ambulance services arising out of the condition of the road as a class six highway."
Hold harmless.
So. Just one perspective. And those two?
Yep. So what's our timeline here? Like, if you are, if we're going to go back to the attorney, ask her some basic questions, how much time do we have to do all this?
March. No, we have, we have till December, right, I believe?
You, you, you have some cuddle for public hearings.
Yeah.
Right. That's what you're shooting for.
Right. So we may have motion to move forward on this, we've had a discussion, there's obviously some changes, part of this is for the benefit of the public who brought this forward, so that they would have an opportunity, if we do not move forward, to be able to, for them to, before, uh, the time runs out. So are we in a position where we want to have a vote?
No, he's open to questions. Mr. Chairman, but I don't know, the reason why I ask about how much time is, do we have enough time to table the motion? Go a little bit and find out all of these answers very quickly, and then meet again, and then take it off the table, and then vote on it, because I'm careful on the hour.
Too many open ears.
Pardon?
Too many open ears.
Yeah, but, but if we table it, then we'd still on the table, and then we can.
Pick it up in two weeks.
Quickly find out those answers. We can even do it another week. It depends on how quickly the attorney gets back. Does that make sense?
Fine, sure, yes, we can have a motion, right? So we're in a motion right now?
If I, well, yes, but if I, if somebody motions to table, it's non-divisible, and then it's just voting on.
Okay.
So I motion to table this.
One second. Okay. All who's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So we table this, so what is the timeframe?
Well, somebody's, you had contacted the selectmen.
I have a contact here, but I want help putting together those questions.
Those are questions, yeah, I agree. So the first question was, are you even left?
Yep, so we have less than five hundred feet in the nearest intersection, rather than no more, right?
Yep.
We have, uh, number two, for two lot maximum subdivision to no subdivisions. We struck number three. Number four is our question, right? So where.
The liability issue.
Well, for specifics, I believe, the question is, what is the, uh, what document or, what does the fire department actually do to determine the access is okay? So that's not really an attorney question, it's really an investigative question to whatever agent is going to go in and do that, which would be fire department. And, and secondly would be the, the liability. Right?
So the question to the lawyer is, on approval of the fire department to determine the access, is that, if, if that goes forward as written, who's liable for the, if it's not to compliance?
And I ask that question because the fire department has their own paperwork, and if we don't, I want to make sure that the paperwork, that they're filing, that the access is, that it's accessible, is enforceable. So if there's already example of Wakefield's, uh, waiver that, or documentation the fire department uses, then we just need to make sure that, that she understands that, and that it's that enforceable. Does that make sense?
So we'll supply that to her.
What's that, the question?
The, the Wakefield, um, yeah.
Is that the Wakefield fire department access?
No, this is the agreement for building permit.
I'm, I'm looking for what the fire department uses.
So I'm, I'm, I'm kind of thinking about this, number four, is that maybe we need to take on the verbiage that is in number si, or number three of this Wakefield, which is that the, uh, that the, the owner, uh, the town, for any loss or damage, including those incurred for failure to provide municipal services, including police, fire, and ambulance, as far as in that condition of road, that maybe we need to have that li, waive that liability within this, uh, amendment, rather than what we have here. Because what we're talking about is liability for municipal services, so maybe number four needs to be rewritten.
Rewritten to more reflect what's in the waiver, is that what you're saying?
Yes. Correct.
Yeah, that way, when the waiver's signed and it's.
Well, I, I think the idea would be that, if somebody was looking to build on a class six road, that this zoning is going to tell them right at the beginning that there is going to be liability, they're going to be waiving their liability to access to those resources from, on the outset, rather than when they go get a building permit, then they realize. I agree.
Well, Wakefield would have a copy of that, too, because they're, they're actually the services.
But we're, I think, we're, by putting it in the, in the amendment here in the zoning, we're kind of starting the process of absolving the town's responsibility for the access.
And being more clear.
Right.
As far as reading the orders.
But this goes in as a warrant on it, this whole thing could look like a book.
Be concise.
Do, do you have a copy of the, the Town of Brookfield waiver? It was in the initial, uh, uh.
Packet.
Yeah. Had some maps and stuff stapled. Yes. I mean, that's the existing one the town has already, I don't know if it's.
The town of Brookfield hereby deems notice that neither assumes responsibility for maintenance including some five, class six roads located within its town limits, nor liability for any damages resulting from the use thereof. Town expressly disclaims any responsibility for maintenance nor any liability for damages revolting, resulting from the use thereof, without necessarily, necessarily intending to include all such class six roads or discontinued roads within the Town of Brookfield. The following represented roads are presently classified as class six roads.
That doesn't say anything about building, that says, doesn't travel upon.
That's correct.
Yeah. So we're proposing to issue a building permit.
Right.
Right.
So if there are, may I ask you?
Yep.
So if there's an, an event, and it requires a. So if there's an event and it requires a fire emergency sign off, the person signs a a sheet of paper, it's signed, the person, the applicant goes to the fire department, fire chief says, yeah, it's okay. He just signs it and basically that's it. Am I correct? And that, am I correct? Is that how that would work? I guess that's.
Just one of the questions for the treaty.
Yeah, well, that's also for the attorney too, because I wanna make sure that, you know, is just the signature on on that waiver. Is that all that's needed? Does that have to be witnessed? You know, I don't know. I don't know the details of that. I mean, this is note, this was obviously not not arise.
Mm-hmm.
So. So we're still, we're still on the list.
Yep, so number four, I think, uh, I'd like to take a stab at rewriting that just for liability for all municipal services. So I'm not gonna do it. I was gonna try it right now, but I won't do it right now. But I think we're in agreement that that needs to change. Yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Uh, five, must be developed current building permit qualifications. Six, road will not be upgraded across five roads. Seven, road will be maintained by the landowner. Uh, eight, Tannenbrook, eighteen, any part of the road will have a class six road. And then addition is no creation of lots within class six, on a class six road or within a class six road. Right?
Yes.
And then next note, snow removal at the end of a class five road does not make it impassable to class six road.
So some somehow there has to be a provision for a spot to get the snow off rather than leave a giant berm on the end of the class five road. The practice that's done now.
That's the practice now?
Yep. When they get to class six, they just stop and pile it up?
I'm wondering though if that is more of a road agent function than you put it as a item in the warrant article.
Well, the item in the warrant article will address that by having the landowner create a place like up on Tannenbrook for the snow to go. And then we instruct the road agent not to block that road. There's a place to put the snow.
So if you have five hundred feet, you have two, two hundred and fifty acre lots, is it up to the first two hundred and fifty feet to make that provision?
It's at the end of the, at the end of the class five road.
So does the landowner at the end of the class five road have to make space for snow for somebody who lives on a class six road?
The owner of the land on the class six road will make a space.
Okay.
So the plow of the class five road has a place to push without blocking the class six road up.
So the first lot on the class six road is undeveloped. The second lot, somebody built a house. So is it the responsibility of the first lot to make space so that the second lot can have access in the winter?
Does number one change that by saying less than five hundred feet?
There'll be one lot.
Okay. Good point. Okay. So so the pass road, provide area for snow. You're worried. Okay. So we may have, we have our items here. We'll formalize this, go back to the lawyer. So where are we gonna meet again? When are we gonna meet again? You wanna meet next week? Next Monday?
Or Monday's a bit for me, so I can do it.
Yes?
Yeah.
Yes, the second, so November second, we're gonna meet? Right, November second, yeah. So we're gonna meet and we're only gonna discuss amendment two.
So that's a week to get our answer.
Yes. Is that?
Next slide.
Next item, yes. Uh, next item is building code update. I do not have anything.
We sent that to the building inspector. He hasn't returned it yet.
Okay.
So maybe we put that on the November second.
Okay.
As well.
Can I ask a question? Regarding that, I watched the video of the meeting. What what's the reasoning behind the the eight pitch on the roofs?
We gotta discuss that. Chris made some points and someone else made points about gambar roofs, et cetera. But the, uh, the point was to require an eight pitch roof on the main building. That may not be the other way around, just so long.
Cause I thought I, the the international building codes, didn't they, well, they address that based on region on the framing of the roof? And wasn't that how they addressed it?
I don't know enough about it. That's why it's went to the building inspector.
Yep.
Okay.
We'll talk about it next Tuesday, next Monday rather.
I have another question.
Clear on the frost wall though, right?
Yes, yep.
So the next item is personal wireless service facilities. So we're able to move forward on this.
New clarification. What do you mean move forward with it? You mean to go forward with creating a warrant article or ordinance?
Yep.
And is this for which timeframe? Because this can be timing to me.
Yes.
So what is it? Just to, just to keep working on it or is it to complete something by?
Yes, complete something for.
We have, we have Tamworth, which has been thoroughly reviewed, but it's a non-zoning town. So I don't know how that's going to apply to us. And what was the other one we had? Somebody that?
Uh, Wolfboro. Yep.
So how would we proceed if we have two examples? Are we just gonna pick one and adopt it?
I don't know. That will happen in the discussion morning.
Okay.
I make a motion to move forward with discussion.
No, again, not for discussion, move forward on creating a warrant article for personal wireless service facilities.
I make a motion to move forward with creating a warrant article.
Yep.
For personal wireless services.
Okay. Do you have a second?
Sure, I'll second that.
Okay, let's have a discussion.
But we're still no closer to finding a company that's willing to take the plunge and do us up, right?
The idea was to have something in place so a company would take the plunge.
Yes.
Our personal wireless service facility ordinance, it isn't gonna work. So it's gotta be upgraded. So that's, that's what Tamworth and a lot of the other.
I remember that, yeah, I remember the discussion.
And what happens is a company who comes in here, looks at our ordinances and says, uh, we can't even help you in here because your ordinance needs to be updated. But I don't know how, Tamworth planning board spent months on this. And I don't know if it took so long just because it was more complicated because they have no zoning ordinances, but I don't mind going forward if we need it, but I don't know how we're gonna do it at the timeframe we have. I really don't, but.
I think it's something by next year.
Well, I'll.
We could always start, I mean, it's.
Have you looked at what was presented?
Yes.
How much has to be changed?
It.
In the Wolfboro one, for example, that's that's current. How much has to be changed to make it applicable?
I don't know. I only looked at the Tamworth one. I didn't look at the Wake, the Wolfboro.
So you don't know how big the job is?
Correct. That's why I don't mind moving forward with doing it. I just worry that if we're gonna try to do it for this, you know, this warranty, if you wanna call it, I don't know how we're gonna do that. But I certainly have to go forward.
The Spectrum, Spectrum vehicles are still driving around town. I mean, how would you, from my driveway?
Well, it's, just so you know, cause I've been on this thing. So finally, drum roll. I actually got a quote from Spectrum to do all the ninety seven or a hundred houses on a quote. It was, I got it last Friday, seven hundred thousand dollars.
Seven hundred.
Now, there's, there's a couple of things, right? One, I'm trying to get a meeting for the selectmen they have with Spectrum, cause there's a contract in place, but they never seem to talk to us. So my thought was, you know, I can give all that information to the selectmen, right? And for example, there's a couple of how, if you took those hundred round numbers and you eliminated, let's say, ten, all of a sudden your fiber mileage is reduced from close to fourteen miles to probably seven or eight miles. So that price would obviously go down dramatically. You know, the next step would be do an RFP to try and get competitive quotes, et cetera. I mean, I'm all in terms of volunteering to help. Obviously, I've been involved and I'm, you know, happy to do whatever it takes to, to at least make this thing palatable, you know?
So as far as discussion for personal wireless service facilities for this group, from our last discussion, it sounds like there's a, there's the Carroll County consortium that's trying to form with, from Albany, right? For, or that.
That is for wired.
Right, wired, exactly. So this, there's also discussions in Spectrum. So I, for me personally, I feel like this is a potentially a lot take on right now. Uh, so I would, in my opinion, I'd rather see us work on this next year. Unless there are members who are thinking that they would like to take this on as their own personal project and.
Well, the odds are pretty good. If I was one of the, the hundred that were cut out because of saving seven miles of wire, then I'm less likely to jump forward and do all the work to get it going. I mean, I know that sounds.
I I have no idea whether you would or you wouldn't.
Well, I'm just saying, we're not gonna swing it all the way around the dick road. I don't think you get too much.
I know, so I think the discussion is about taking on this, this item as a warrant article right now, so go ahead.
I, so I wasn't here a lot the last time when you were here, I believe, but I heard you talking in the background. Did you mention that it could be five or six years before something like this would happen anyways?
It could be.
Okay.
But I think, you know, again, if you're part of the hundred people who don't have internet, right? If you didn't have internet, you wouldn't say, well, you, you know, it's kinda, let's wait two or three years. I mean, if you didn't have electricity and you didn't have water, you know, you would say, gee, I think we need to get on that. But the fact that, you know, internet is the same thing for a lot of people in this town. And if you need me to go see the hundred people to see how interested they would be to.
I don't think that's the issue here so much. It's the capacity of the planning board, the authority to execute this for March.
So to Rich's point, none of you have probably read it, Wolfboro's, which was just passed, which I think, not being an expert, that if you just took the time to read it by next week, I don't think that, you know, you're gonna have to do much modification to have an ordinance that's up to date. Cause what they did is they hired an attorney. They spent twenty grand. They had a local guy, I can't get the name of who he is, who worked in the telecommunications space. So it wasn't just some attorney who didn't understand the subject.
Is there any important discussion on this, you guys?
Yeah.
Go for it.
I think it should stay on the agenda. This is something that the planning board was talking about for three years now. I think it should be on the agenda. We just don't know if we're gonna get it done, but I can't say that until I read it. It might be, it might be perfect, a perfect fit for us. And all it would take is a simple review by our own attorney, probably. It's not gonna cost twenty thousand dollars for us to have somebody just look at, you know, the basis of it. But I think it's gotta remain on on the agenda, at least after you look at, I mean, if we look at the Wolfboro ordinance and it doesn't seem like it's gonna fit, then we can revisit it. But I'm not saying that we have to hurry up and get this on the warrant. I'm just saying we can't make that decision until we look at it.
And that would be to use this, the Wolfboro, the buy-ins to replace the pages of crap that we got right now.
Yeah, what you called it is pretty much what it is.
Right.
And it could only be an improvement. We just gotta read it first. So I'll see why they can't stay on the agenda. And if we decide next, next time we look at it, that it's gonna take a lot longer, then we can make that decision that I would just knock it off to the next year.
I I don't wanna confuse you, but we just got, selectmen just got notified they're putting a cell tower up in East Wakefield. East Wakefield. So they must have zoning appeals with it. They want something similar.
Yeah.
There's another one that works next door. So you got two towns.
Yes, yes.
I just wanted to be clear. We're talking about the personal wireless facility, uh, and you're talking about wired, wired Spectrum.
Yes.
Broadband.
Okay.
So what we were working on, I don't think.
Well, they're talking about getting some kind of access, whether it be cellular, five G or wired. So they're, I think your intent is to cover all the bases. It's one of those technologies.
My intent is not to confuse you guys. I'm just trying to share with you what I'm doing to try to get, you know, this whole rural broadband thing going. It's not easy. Trust me, it took me twelve months just to get a quote.
So we wanna help you understand this. If, um, seven hundred thousand dollars for the whole town, we call that, just call it three hundred and fifty for arguing with base.
Well, that's the whole thing, right? A, you 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 try to negotiate with more than one supplier. So consolidated, you you own the, you know, you own the town now, the hundred houses. Do you want the business? No? Yes? What are you willing to do? The line of broadband, you you just agreed to help Wolfboro out for forty homes kind of on the Osippe line. How close are they to to Brookfield? And how much would it cost them to do it? So at the end of the day, I don't know the answer to the question, right? And and at the end of the day, on this whole CARES Act thing, Wolfboro got both Spectrum and ABB to pay for it regardless, because on the CARES Act, you had to complete the work by December fifteenth. So the first question was, what happens if you don't get it done by December fifteenth? You're not given much time. What are you gonna do? And they both said, you know what? It's the right thing to do. We'll just do it. So I'm not saying I'm gonna get it for free. I'm just saying they did do it for free, potentially, and maybe, you know, or it's a grant. You know, the town's not gonna, I don't think the town's gonna pay for three hundred grand or five hundred grand. I I'm not that naive. So I don't know. But when there's a wolf, there's a way, I guess.
So.
Or at least worth a try.
Then ABB, if they're serviceable, they come. They come up almost as close to you as this one.
Exactly.
On the other side.
Exactly. So.
So we're discussing this next. Can you take, my name is Brad. Yes?
Yeah, and they, they order to the members. To tell them we can read the Wolfboro.
Yes. Yes.
And send it around.
Is that Wolfboro ordinance available on line or something?
We can email it to you.
We have.
What you ordered? Yes.
It was my understanding, Mr. Chairman, that when that was provided to us, that that was gonna be not talked about during this meeting. And I thought this was gonna be on our next regular meeting. I didn't know this was gonna be voted on hard at this time. But it's good.
Don't guarantee that we'll keep on the agenda like you said.
Well, we gotta read it first and know what a perfect fit and then we just put it on the ballot. I mean, it's been approved, it's gotta be an improvement from, from what we have now. And if it's already working, Wolfboro is the problem.
Well, let's read it. Well, let's read it.
Yep.
So tonight, no guarantees. But Monday will all.
If it, if it, yes.
All right, we're all set, you guys all set?
Yep.
We're adjourned, tee ten.